Thanks, there's these shoes I wore in the pictures. I sat too, that's why I did it.
We'll wait for the signal. Okay.
Good evening and welcome to the August 5th, 2021 Board of County Commission meeting. This is a special meeting for us regarding a public hearing for the 2022 budget. This meeting is being streamed live on Sedgwick County's Facebook page, YouTube channel, and will be placed on our website. Comments regarding the recommended budget will be accepted until 5:00 PM Tuesday, August 24th. With that, Chairman, I'll hand the meeting over to you.
Okay, thank you Emily, and good evening, everybody. Welcome to the, we're having a special meeting, one of two regarding the budget. Today's Thursday, August 5th at 6:00 PM. This is our open meeting for the evening, and is there something wrong there, Emily? Okay. All right, so we will call the meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Please stand for the flag, Luke.
Pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
New business. Item A, Public Hearing Regarding the 2022 Sedgwick County Budget.
Okay, Commissioners, we have a handful of people signed up to address us. We will cover the regular, our regular budget items first, and then we will adjourn and go to the Fire District, and we'll open it up then. So, Tom, take it away.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office. This evening is the first public hearing for the 2022 Recommended Budget. Sedgwick County's recommended operating budget totals are $462,548,518. This budget will be supported with a property tax levy of $161,536,297, which is approximately equivalent to 29.359 mils based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments. I recommend you open the public hearing, receive comments, and close the public hearings when it is over.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. I know we have our CFO here and our legal counsel here, so we will start the meeting. Anybody have anything to say ahead of time? If not, we will call the first person signed up is Denise Sherman. Denise? We're trying to, we don't have a lot of people signed up, but we're trying to hold this to five minutes, but we'll see how the evening goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Greetings, Chairman Meitzner, Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Cruz, and Commissioner Howell. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening on behalf of the Kansas African American Museum. I am Denise Sherman, Executive Director, and with me this evening is Mr. Ted Ayers, President of the Board of Directors for the Kansas African American Museum. TCAM, as we are affectionately known in our community, serves as a cultural hub for innovative, collaborative, familial, and historic storytelling centered around the African and African American experience, thought-provoking exhibitions, and educational programming. TCAM is committed to continue to serve in Sedgwick County while expanding our presence throughout the state of Kansas and become a regional cultural destination for others to learn more about the rich and robust contributions of African Americans from Kansas and how they have served our nation. We gratefully thank Sedgwick County for the commitment and support it has given us over the years. This financial support has been the lifeblood of our museum and helped us keep doors, our doors open for various public, to our various publics. Commissioner Meitzner, thank you for encouraging us on all our efforts. Commissioner Dennis, you have enthusiastically supported us throughout your service and shared many ideas. Commissioner Howell, your business acumen has provided us with additional ideas. And Commissioner Lopez, we appreciate your interest and engagement during your first term. And Commissioner Cruz, thank you for serving on our board and as an advocate for the museum. Thank you to County Manager Stoltz and his staff, and also we want to sincerely thank the many Sedgwick County employees who help us with maintenance and keep our building comfortable and welcoming our guests. Again, we are so appreciative of this ongoing support and collaboration. Over the past several years, TCAM has taken steps to expand our Board of Directors to reflect our community and that we are the Kansas African American Museum. Our board consists of energetic and committed leaders who are varied in experience and skillsets and are optimistic about our future. The makeup of our board includes community leaders, young professionals, educators, businesspersons, healthcare professionals, and public servants. Our board members are located across the state, including Wichita, Western Kansas, Topeka, and Kansas City. We are very optimistic about our future. We have a bold vision and a strategic plan that requires additional funding. Over the next couple of years, we envision TCAM's role in our community to be the premier place where communities come to learn about or tell the Kansas African American story. To move forward with confidence, we are asking Sedgwick County for conditional, for consideration for additional funds to achieve our vision. This will assist us in our strategic plans to develop TCAM into the cultural center that our community, state, and region deserves. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you today as you consider next year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Does anybody, and Ted, thanks for being here as well. Does anybody have any questions for Denise? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you, Denise. Appreciate it. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Margot McDonald.
Good evening, Commissioners. I currently serve as the Chair of the Sedgwick County Extension Board, along with being President of the Sedgwick County Master Gardeners. I come here today to share our appreciation for your support and partnership with the extension. The last year and a half has been very difficult, and I don't think people realize the broad reach of the extension programming. Tonight, I'd like to bring some positive things up, because we all need positive, right?
Yes.
Okay. Health, nutrition, and wellness, we have big focus on diabetes and the management of this devastating disease. We have a program called Dining with Diabetes, and obviously, we could meet with people in person to go through this program, but we had to do something because of the pandemic. So what we did is we put it online in February 21, and now we reach audiences that we have not been able to reach before. People that might not have, they may have scheduling conflicts, or transportation, or be confined at home. In the area of hunger, food deserts, we have 100,000 Wichita residents who do not have access to affordable nutritious food. This is a big, big deal for us. Our FNEP and SNAPED agent, Stephanie Lopez, worked with City Transit this year, outlined plans for a free ride program for the Double Up Food Bucks Program. As a result of this meeting, our EBT and our Double Up patrons and their guests will get a free ride to and from participating farmers' markets. This program began on June 12. In 2020, the Demo Garden and Master Gardeners partnered with the Common Grounds Mobile Market and donated 600 pounds of produce to seniors who don't have access to transportation or were homebound. This program continues today. Next area of involvement, horticulture. We developed online gardening programs. We had a five-week 2020 Fall Gardening Series. We have K-State Garden Hour on Wednesdays. We have a free online course titled Victory Gardens 101. In total, we had 21,306 participants with these programs, spanned over 37 of 50 states and six international participants. Pretty incredible. We developed the virtual hotline. We have Master Gardeners at home answering the phone, because we still need to tell people what to do, right? And that took a lot of effort. Local food growing growers ICT in their third year. Last year, 2020, 57 beginning farmers were educated about growing specialty crops such as fruits, vegetables, honey. Think of the economic results of developing grocers. Residents spent just over $1.6 billion on food in 2018. If we can purchase food from these local growers, 5%, that's $80 million back into our county each year. Incredible program. We have an agriculture program that offered small acres agriculture series online for landowners with small numbers of acres. Six meetings, 280 participants. 4-H youth development had to get creative as well. We had, we integrated our first bilingual club in 2020. We had a 4-H food challenge, similar to TOT. That was, that was very cool. The fair was canceled in 2020, but we still had our virtual livestock auction. That's a very important thing to the kids. There's so many opportunities in our 4-H programming, and now we have been able to get out more with our outreach and enrichment programs, and I hope that that can continue where we take it to the classroom. Okay, home and family life, so important in these times with mental health issues escalating. We did a bonding through Board Games Facebook page that was created. 3,000 individuals, some of them international, creative ideas. We had 200 spring break activity kits that we distributed, and the agents worked together on that. Bloom and Grow event, I hope some of you went to that event. It was in May, May 1. We distributed 500 vegetable kits, 500 pollinator kits. Seeds, plants, and et cetera were in those kits. We maintain 16 gardens with minimum volunteers through the year, and I will, I'm going to wrap this up really quick.
That's okay, that's all right.
Pretty excited here.
Yes.
You can tell. Pretty passionate.
You're giving us some good information.
Okay, 16 gardens with minimum volunteers, one of them out here. I hope you all enjoy it. We maintained that one throughout the pandemic. Now that things have opened up, we can again advise and assist with over 10 community gardens, therapeutic gardens, and school gardens. So let me just leave some final thoughts with you. Last several years have been tough for us fiscally. We were unable to collect revenue for canceled events, room rentals, unable to conduct fundraisers. We've had to push back some capital outlay plans and expenses such as floor tiles, updating bathrooms, lighting. We have a vehicle that really needs to be replaced. We have an irrigation system that's in pretty bad shape. We need to cover our escalating, increasing operational expenses. We want you all to keep all these needs in mind when you're looking at the allocation money. So finally, I want to tell you this. We have an incredible director. Jennifer Brantley, Dr. Brantley, has led this extension through leadership, vision, and a sense of humor through a very difficult time. Our extension team is dedicated, committed, hardworking, innovative, and compassionate. Think of all those hours they spent on the virtual programming. You all know this whole Zoom thing is not an easy thing to do, right? The creative ideas so that we could still keep connected to our public and our residents. We have 500, 500 enthusiastic volunteers ready to serve the county. All of our programs have an impact on our constituents. We need to work together to strengthen and enhance our programs, and I want to again thank you for your support. We appreciate it. If you want to volunteer, just give me a call. We work Saturdays and in the evenings out here on the gardens. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate you letting me go over a little bit. Jennifer said I shouldn't, but I couldn't help it. Not her fault.
Well, we'll talk to Jennifer about that later. Jennifer, welcome to, to the meeting. Appreciate you being here, or doctor, I mean, so, and thank you, Margot. Does anybody have any questions for Margot? Thank you. You shared a lot of good information for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next up, we have Mr. Victor Hogstrom.
Commissioner Meitzner and members of the Commission, it's a pleasure to be in front of you again this evening to represent the largest arts and cultural center in central Kansas, the largest educational center in central Kansas, the largest entertainment and cultural center in central Kansas, to represent the voice and platform of our community through local television programs, the station that also honors the people of central Kansas known simply as PBS Kansas. As you know, there is such a value associated with public broadcasting, and as I said to you the last time, your public television station has been located at its current location for over 40-plus years, and it has stifled our creativity. So we have taken a bold move, a bold step in taking what is necessary, and that is the acquisition of our new building. And we're asking you, and it's simply a quick reminder that how important it is to us, to name our community room the Cedric County Community Room. And as you know, you know what the amount is that we're asking you for. It is so important for your public TV station to be relocated and to reflect a greater image in the community and do, provide greater services. And this is what our entire purpose is for the move, and the goal is to serve the people of this and other counties in central Kansas. You are also planning a move, and I'll make a bold offer to you two. We have a large studio in our new building. They're a large studio, about four times the size of this room. I propose you consider having your meetings, because we normally televise them live anyway, having them in our studio, offices somewhere else. We don't have enough room for you, for offices, but with offices somewhere else and having the meetings in our studio where we can turn on the cameras and bang you, continue the services that you provide to thousands of viewers that watch and enjoy and appreciate what you do for this community. So please consider that. But keep in mind that your support for the Cedric County Community Room is very key to my presence here this evening, and we will appreciate your continued consideration. I understand it is being considered, and we thank you, and that's what I like to do too, express our appreciation. Any questions?
Okay, Victor, thank you. Appreciate all the work that you do for not only us, but for the whole South Central Kansas and even Western Kansas and other parts of Kansas, so thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Victor? I don't see any Victor, so thank you again.
Thank you again.
Is there anybody else that wants to address the Commission that did not sign up on the regular budget items? So I don't see any, so we will move to adjourn the, the public comment, and we'll, we'll receive and, I guess I'll make a motion to receive and file the public comment. There's been a motion in a second. Any other questions? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. So without any further business on the regular meeting, we will adjourn that meeting, and we will now open the, the meeting for the Fire District One. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
New business. Item A, Public Hearing Regarding the 2022 Fire District One Budget.
Hello, Tom.
Thank you again, Chairman. Good evening again, Commissioners. This evening is the first public hearing on the 2022 Recommended Budget for Fire District Number One. It totals $21,95,559. This budget will be supported with a property tax levy of $18,474,511, which will require a mil levy of approximately 17.889 mils based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments. I recommend you open the public hearing, receive comments, and close the public hearing once it is over.
Okay. Any question for Tom at this point? I don't see anything. So we will go to the public comment. First off, we have Casey Ingles. Casey, while you're making your way to the podium, the way our budget process has worked is that we all, as Commissioners, get to submit over time here as we review to the CFO various things on any budget item. And I just think it's worth mentioning, and then on the 11th of the month, we will be publicly receiving back all of the individual Commissioner comments. But I just, I just would like to just say that I was seven years at City Council, as most of you know, and I'm very familiar with the city fire department budget, and it's mingled in the regular budget of the city. And I know that you all do such a fantastic job of first responding. Often, you're the first responders well, well before EMS crews get there, and I can't say how much I appreciate that. I've looked at, I've independently looked into your pay structure, the general pay adjustment of 2% is, is there. You're not in the reclassified, the firefighters are not in the reclassified area, but I've looked at it, and it's easy to see the mil levy versus your budget, way less complicated than the city, I can tell you that, and it's a separate item. And, and I, respectful of, I've talked with finance and others, and I've done some careful analysis, and I, and I'm going to be suggesting that one of my, my solutions is that we raise that 2%, double it to, to the 4% going forward for the future. Now, if that passes, I don't know, but, and I just also want to full disclose that I did not have any conversations. I hardly recognize any of you firefighters, thank you. I had no direct conversation with any firefighters. I want to be on record knowing that I have no family or relatives that work in the fire department. I don't have any relatives or family members working in any department in Sedgwick County. So this was totally independent, transparent, the thoughts that I had, and I just, I see you all are here, and I just thought I would share that with that. So with that, Tracy, or Casey, I mean, sorry about that.
Okay, well, I appreciate those comments and your concerns, and that's, it's appreciated. That, that goes a long ways for guys to see that you're taking a look at that. So I appreciate that beforehand acknowledgement, so. So I am Casey Ingles. I'm a Lieutenant with Cedric County Fire. I also represent the firefighters of IFF Local 2612 as the President. Right now, we, I represent about 70 firefighters with Fire District One, and that is why we're here today. We're concerned about the wages and pay increases for the firefighters, and specifically firefighters and lieutenants within Cedric County, which would be the hourly employees. You kind of answered my first question already. I was going to ask the Fire Board what the current wage and increases look like across the board in 2022 for the Fire District, and I'm asking from, you know, district chiefs all the way down to firefighters. Is it the 2%?
Right, it is. Well, we have our CFO here that can address that.
Oh, okay. You want me to get this out of your way? Good evening, Commissioners. Lindsay Povrussow, your CFO. So to answer your question, we do have 2% general pay adjustments. Generally, we do have one reclassification, I believe, for a mechanic position, but we will confirm that and get that information to you before you have another public hearing on this discussion.
Okay.
Okay, so thank you for that clarification.
Thanks, Lindsay.
So before my next question, I just want to make a note of the current situation that lies within SCFD pertaining to the wages of the firefighters and lieutenants. And before I go on, I want to make note too that this is not an issue within the leadership of the Fire District with administration. There's no issues like that, you know, as people may link those together with some other public safety entities where they may have that problem, but I want to state that that's not an issue within our department when it comes to leadership. This is strictly pertaining to the compensation and wages. So right now, the way our situation is looking within the Fire District, we're looking at 10 to 11% attrition rate, which is uncommonly high when you, when you're talking about the fire department, not just locally, but nationally. 10 to 11% is very high in the, in the fire department. You typically see people sticking around long-term as a, you know, people call it a noble profession, and we, we take that seriously, you know? We, we're here for the citizens, and so we don't just leave on a whim just because we feel like it, you know? We, we stick around and guys understand their market value. They look at that independently. I don't have to even go out there and do that research to kind of do it on their own. So right now, I'm going to attribute that attrition to the stagnation of the wage improvements since going on about 2014 is when we really started to see issues with our pay. Right now, currently firefighters and lieutenants with the Fire District Right now, currently firefighters and lieutenants with the Fire District range anywhere from 12 to 16% behind in comparison to Wichita Fire. We, I compare us to Wichita Fire because we work so closely with them. When we talk about, I know consolidation has been a big topic within our fire departments, and functionally, we work beside them every day, and just today, we, you know, we ran a fire with them. So what we do essentially is the same job, and we're being, you know, our pay represents that we're doing the same job for 12 to 16% less than they are. It's no secret that, you know, you could call it a wage crisis, but across the whole county, you know, and that's why I, you know, we used to guys set up there, and you know that there's a pay problem, and you're working on fixing it. We appreciate that. But when it comes down to it, the fire department's no longer competitive in the market, and we're losing really good firemen to not just Wichita Fire, but also smaller departments. And you could name any of the smaller departments around here, Hutch, Salina, Derby, and we're losing guys to all those departments. And I feel like a lot of that has to do with also there's no sense of security when it comes to our future and what the compensation plan looks like. Without that security, without a plan to go into the future, we will undoubtedly see higher attrition rates even, that could go above that 10 to 11%. And I'm looking at guys in the three to 15-year range that have been on our apartment that have seen that stagnation since 2014, where the pay has just really been extremely stagnant. And that's that three to 15-year firefighter that has not seen a pay increase of a whole lot. So I'm going to move along. We do appreciate your willingness to push for an increase. That is appreciated. But it will only help ease the pain for a brief moment for next year. We would like to see something beyond 2022, what that's going to look like. I do fear that at the moment, the fire department is on the edge of a major personnel retention issue beyond 2022. So my question to you for right now, next, is what is your plan going forward after 2022?
Well, Commissioner Dennis.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to state that I concur with our chairman's assessment that we need to put a 4% pay raise in the budget for 2022. I think that's the first step that we need to take. But you bring up a good question on what's a long-range plan, and I think first, we got to make sure that our budget can handle the 4% and where we're going from there. But if you, in my whole career, through the military, through teaching and so forth, I've always served with a step system in pay, because it kind of tells you where your future is. And so what I would really like to do is, as we finish up this 2022 budget and look forward to what we're going to do in the future in order to be able to retain the folks that we've got that we've already trained, and we need to keep them in the, in the service, is I think we need to take a hard look at a change in your, your pay structure to a step program. So that would be my solution, but we're going to have to work that through a lot of people.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I'm, Casey, I'm well aware that, I know the city, you work closely with the city. I think they're like a 3.75 raise this year.
For next year. They were at 4% for 2021, they're 3.75 for next year.
So I know this doesn't put you on equal par, as you mentioned, but it tries to keep us there a little bit closer as we, as we work through this. As I, as I learned, this is about a 10 or 15, you've alluded to it, this is a 10 or 15-year scenario that it's going to be hard to make up in one year.
Right.
So, but we do appreciate everything you all do, that's, that's for sure, so.
I do appreciate Commissioner Dennis's comments towards the step plan. I think that is a, you know, a good step in the right direction, that a step plan provides security for guys going down the line and in the future. So I do hope you take that seriously and look into that. Just my time up.
Okay. Do you have any other closing comments?
In closing, I would like to bring up the fact in 2020, you know, we're all aware of the IRBs that are given out, and this is maybe more of a political question or political statement, but in 2020, the IRBs given out resulted in a little over $2 million in potential revenue that could have came into the Fire District, and I don't know what steps would have to be taken, whether it be legislative, legislatively or politically, I don't know. But I would like to see the Fire District somehow become exempt from IRBs given out and look, and I would like that to be taken seriously, too, because that is a major potential revenue for the Fire District. To me, if you're providing public safety, you know, we are providing a service to the citizens and to the businesses, so if you, if you talk to a lot of people, it may not be fair in the eyes of some people that we're providing a free service to businesses and not the citizens. And that's what these IRBs essentially do, is provide a free service to businesses that are given those, and the Fire District is included in those IRBs. So I would like to see IR, the Fire District become exempt from IRBs given out in the future. In conclusion, this, you know, these guys are the best guys out there. I'll put them up against anybody else in the country. We have some of the best firemen that you could ask for, and I want to keep them here. So, and the chief wants to keep them here. So I will do whatever it takes to help you guys out, and the chief will do whatever it takes. So I appreciate you listening to our comments and concerns today, and I'll leave it with that.
Any other questions, Ms. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I don't really have a question. The last time I saw this many firefighters in here is when we were selecting a chief. I'd like to see you guys in here more. I think it's important, and I'm thankful that you guys took the time out of your night. I know that you guys have pretty crazy schedules, so I appreciate you being here to speak to us. I did ask for a pretty aggressive pay plan, so I'm in your corner, and I think that you do need to be paid for the skill set that you, that you have and that you continue to, to train for. I did the Fire Ops 101. That was pretty intense. Tell Don that I'm sad that he's not in here right now. But I appreciate what you guys do, and I hear you, and, and I'll be in your corner trying to fight for, for more compensation for each one of you guys. So thank you for being here tonight, and if you have any questions or concerns or comments, my door is always open.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, and Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, real quickly, I'm glad that Commissioner Cruz brought Fire Ops 101. She and I both went through that, but we've got three commissioners up here that I'd love to see go through it. So if you can ever get that set up again, I, I think that they would be very happy to go through Fire Ops 101.
It is in the works, I can tell you that, so.
Thank you, Chairman. I know Commissioner Lopez is looking forward to it.
Yep. She was fortunate enough.
Commissioner Howell, he rappels off buildings. Very athletic commission you have here.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll put it together, and we'll, we'll put you guys through the wringer, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, yes, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to say thank you for being here, and I, I think the steps pay is a good idea. I think we ought to take a look at that. I, you raised a couple of data points I've not heard before, so I'm going to do some, some, look at some of the things, the $2 million IRB lost revenue, that is a surprising number. I'm not saying it's not right, but I want, I want to take, take a look at that. And in terms of the high attrition, again, I think when we see high attrition in any department, we need to open our eyes and find out what's going on. So I think that our management, I'm sure they, they know this is my desire, but if we have high attrition, we need to find out where people are going, and we need to investigate and find out what's going on. It could be that people are having better, better career opportunities someplace else. That's very, that very well might be the problem, but maybe there's other things we should know about as well. So with that, I just think we need to, to take a, take a kind of a close look at that, Mr. Manager, if you don't mind, that's my request. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks again, Casey. Good to see you.
Thank you.
All right. And thank you, firefighters. You said guys a lot of time. I assume there's a, a gal or two in the, in the department.
There are guys and gals.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. I know there's two of them wondering about that, what you're going to say. Okay. We don't have any other comments under the fire, so we will. Tom, do you have any closing comments? Okay. Ms. CFO. CFO, do you have any closing comments? Okay, well, thank you all for taking time out, as has been suggested before. So with that, we will adjourn the fire meeting, and we will adjourn for the evening. So thank you all for coming.